Okay, Mr. Marshall, we have Amherst Media in the house. It's six thirty-one. You do have a quorum of five. Looks like we're good to go.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board meeting of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. My name is Doug Marshall, and as the Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at six thirty-two P. M. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken, pursuant to Chapter Twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one and extended by Chapter Twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, and extended again by the state legislature on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This planning board meeting. Hold on, I just lost my script. This planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda, which lists the Zoom link at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the Town of Amherst website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
Yeah.
Tom Long.
President.
Andrew McDougall.
President.
Hi, Doug Marshall, I'm present. Janet McGowan.
Here.
I do not see Johanna Newman, and I do not see Karen Winter. Why don't we try to note the time at which they arrive? Board members, if any technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment. I will see your request and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. For the general public, the public comment period is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. All right, so the time is six thirty-five, and we'll start with our minutes. Board members, does anyone have comments on the minutes? I know Janet, you had sent some comments to Chris earlier. Would you like to share those with the board? Janet, you are muted.
I can't believe I did that after all these years. Anyway, I, one of them was on page four of the minutes where there's a statement by Chris Brestrop that the CONCAM hasn't voted yet, and then the statement that they had, and so I think it was that they had. But they, they hadn't, like, issued an order yet, so that was a quick one. And then there was just this kind of loose use of the word townhouse or townhomes in separate words, and I just thought we should just call it townhouses one word, which is how we do it in the bylaw, and that kind of pops up all over the place, but because I was kind of confused by it, and I was like, what are townhomes? And I was thinking like motorhomes and stuff like that. So it's just really, that's a small one.
All right. Anybody else have other comments? Anybody have any objections to the edits that? All right, not seeing any other hands. Would anybody like to move that the minutes with the edits that Janet proposed be adopted? Andrew, I see your hand.
They're moved.
Thank you, and Tom?
One second.
All right. Thank you both. All right, we'll go right into a vote on that, starting with Bruce.
Vote to approve.
Great. Tom?
Hi.
And Andrew?
Hi.
Janet?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. So the motion passes five in favor, two absent. All right, so now the time is six thirty-eight, and we'll go to item two on our agenda, which is public comment period. And let's see, how many people have we got from the public tonight? We've got, I see, six people. I think I often read their names at this time, so they know who else is in the public. We have Ashley Laurie, Bruce Carson, Dorothy Pam, Jennifer Taub, Mandy Johannicky, and Will Laurie. So, members of the public, would any of you like to make a public comment about an item not on our agenda tonight at this time? All right, I am not seeing any hands from the public, so we, oh, and I believe Elizabeth Vierling just arrived. Elizabeth, we are in the public comment period. If you want to make a public comment about something not on our agenda, this is the time to raise your hand. All right, I don't see anyone's hand still, so we will go on to the next item on our agenda, which is item three, Proposed Zoning Amendments. And this is a presentation and discussion, really mostly, of the zoning amendment proposals proposed by Mandy Johannicky and Pat DeAngelis. Concerning Article Three Use Regulations to change the permitting requirements for owner-occupied duplexes, affordable duplexes, non-owner-occupied duplexes, converted dwellings, and townhouses in order to create a more streamlined permitting pathway for these uses. In particular, to remove the use category subdivisible dwellings, to add a use category three-family detached dwelling or triplex, to add a permitting pathway and standards and conditions for triplexes, to modify standards and conditions for other housing use categories, to amend permitting requirements for housing use categories in the Aquifer Recharge Protection Overlay District. And then in Article Four Development Methods to add three-family dwelling where appropriate, in Article Nine Nonconforming Lots Uses and Structures to add a reference to three-family dwelling, and under Article Twelve Definitions to add three-family detached dwelling unit or triplex, and to delete subdivitable dwellings. All right. So, Mandy Jo, I see you. If you want to say anything, this is a good time to give us an intro. I know you've been here before, and maybe you want to just sit back and listen. I do understand that you are hoping the board will come out of this evening's discussion with a clearer sense at least of our, of what we like about the proposal and would support, and, you know, and thereby what we don't like and don't support. So at least, that's my understanding of what we have as our task this evening. Mandy Jo.
Thank you, Doug. I'm not gonna say much. I've, we've done a presentation for two different meetings. I think, you know, I'm here to answer some questions. I do have to leave at seven fifteen, and Pat could not be here tonight for a number of reasons, and she sends her regrets. I will listen to the meeting, the rest of the meeting that I have to miss once I leave. But yeah, I, I think Pat and I are hoping to, you know, we know it's not the public hearing. We know the public hearing's coming up, and that as we go through the public hearing process, there are likely to be changes. But throughout this meeting and the public hearing process, it would be good for us to be able to get an understanding of particularly those parts of the proposal that the board as a whole, or as a majority, would like to see changes to, potentially with what those changes might be, where they are leaning, and so that we can discuss it as sponsors and potentially come back with revisions and all based on, on those comments, but, but we'd really like to understand not just whether one person wants a change, but whether the body as a whole is seeking a potential change or wants that, because that helps us more. It's good to hear what each individual person, person is thinking, but as a whole, since you'll be voting as a whole, that's, that's where we would really like some help. And so I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, board members. We've had, this is our third meeting in which we've discussed this proposal, and I don't know if you are feeling that you've got a sense of what you like or what you don't like. This is the time to start talking about that. I guess to kick things off and not seeing any hands yet from others, I'll, I'll just say what I like and what and one concern that I have. I actually think that we should try this in the RG and the RVC zoning districts. Those districts that are adjacent to our town centers and village centers, and that we should hold off and maybe, you know, for a, for a later date, if ever, doing this in some of the outline districts, the, I think it's the RN and the RRO and RLD. Someone is not.
Yep, I, I took care of that.
Okay.
Karen's in the audience, isn't it? And her hand is raised. Just, I'm sorry, Doug, just to jump in.
Yeah, okay. Pam, can you move her over?
Yep, I'm in the process.
All right, good. So, yeah, I, I feel like I would like to see more density and more housing in areas that the master plan calls for us to be increasing housing and density and building up. And that increasing the density in, in some of the outline areas is, is akin to sprawl. And I'd rather not go in that direction. If there's a desire to do it in the RN district, that, that district has a lot of different characteristics depending on where in that district you are. So it, I would be willing to consider that in, in some proximity to major public roads that are served by buses, for instance. And the, the roads that came to mind initially were North Pleasant Street, South Pleasant Street, West Street down to Bay Road, and Northampton Road, and there may be others. But, you know, say within, say a thousand feet of that, of those roads. And then the only other thing I was gonna say is, I'm a little bit concerned about the how a property might transition between an owner-occupied duplex to a non-owner-occupied duplex. And the fact that we would be in the position of having to hold a public, a site plan review on a duplex that was already approved for owner occupancy in order to grant non-owner occupancy, but the things already built, the landscape's already done, and what kind of leverage or flexibility would we have to actually influence the design of the duplex at that point when it was proposed to go to non-owner occupancy? So, you know, I mean, the easy thing would be to say that both owner and non-owner occupied duplexes should have a site plan review upfront before they happen. I, I, I realize that's probably not in the spirit of what you've proposed, what you want to do, but I'm, I don't know how else to deal with that. So I will leave that as a question. And, you know, maybe it's best that we just go forward with the way you've proposed it and see, get through a couple of them and see what happens. But I think that could be a, an uncomfortable position for the board. All right, so that's, that's my thought. And Tom, I see your hand.
Sure, thanks, Doug. I had a similar thought, and, and it was similar zones, but I think you have the right ones. Sort of now that I'm looking at it, and actually the context of the road, but I think the idea of testing this in a, in a certain set of areas that we outline as places we want to see growth, and then getting data. And I think the thing that I'm missing from all of these presentations is data. So how do we know that it builds equity? How do we know that it's going to improve X, Y, or Z? Make things cheaper, make things more affordable? How do we know any of these things without actually testing this out in our town? So I'd love to see a controlled test within certain zones, and I'd like to see some data from that before we push it out to other areas, and maybe we even have data that tells us we should actually put it in this zone and not that zone, and maybe we actually find out some information that would be helpful for us to deploy this in a more strategic way. Not that I don't think, Mandy Jo, that this is strategic, but in a way that is responding to data on the ground. So that would be my sense, and I think that Doug's notion of those zones to begin testing sound appropriate to me.
All right, thank you, Tom. Other board members, this is the time for input. All right, I see Janet and then Andrew Janet.
So I, I agree with what Tom is saying and Doug is saying about the RN, RLD, and RRO, because, you know, when, you know, even though this is sort of presented as a process or a change in process or permitting, there's a lot of added density in it. If you look at how it will turn out, and I was looking, I have the benefit of this huge map of Amherst and its zoning districts, and, you know, I was looking at the RO and RLD, which is basically mostly, almost exclusively are open land that you see, and all of a sudden we have townhouses in there, you know, ten townhouses on, you know, X amount of acres, and I see, I would just start seeing in my mind carved, you know, farms being carved up for very lucrative housing, you know, three-story townhouses, ten townhouses, or lots being divided to, you know, kind of spawn those, and that just seems to be the essence of sprawl, sprawl, and also goes against the whole master plan of having density in the village centers and protecting, you know, the lands that we're trying to protect. And so I, I do think those should be taken off the table. I, so I, I was concerned, I have many concerns. I also was concerned about the removal of all sorts of design standards for duplexes, for converted dwellings. And it's, you know, I think we definitely need more design standards. Our master plan calls for that. You know, we've been trying to get to that even for the town center, but, you know, the idea that we're, we're taking away statements like it should fit into the neighborhood, or, you know, all these different things that would give a board or anybody the ability to kind of look at a project and say, you know, look at the impact it has on the adjacent properties and things like that, so that those get lifted off in several spots, so I was concerned about that. So I, I don't think we should be lifting design controls and abilities of boards to kind of regulate the look or the impact on the surrounding area. I don't think, you know, and one of the things I began to understand, think about is townhouses are apartment buildings, right? There are ten, you know, ten units, they're stuck together, and I don't understand why the logic of treating them differently, apartment buildings and townhouses differently, like, why would you permit apartment, we don't permit apartment buildings in RN, so why would we permit townhouses in RN? We don't permit apartments in RLD and RRO, so why would we permit them there? And then also, you know, in the RG neighborhoods, we allow townhouses, but we do it by special permit, because it's very dense, it's gonna have big impacts, and we need a board to look at what the impacts are very carefully and have the ability to kind of put in the conditions and the controls that make sure that it fits into the neighborhood. It doesn't have a negative impact, and, you know, I want, I think the board should start looking about at who's living in these, you know, who's gonna be living in the density, and how do we prevent, you know, one neighborhood after another to kind of turning into a student neighborhood? And so, but we need more controls on that, not fewer controls. So I think we should kind of trust the boards to do the right thing, but really think about, you know, if we're gonna do analogies, is a townhouse is an apartment building side by side? And if we're saying no apartment somewhere, why are we saying yes to townhouses, or if we're saying apartments by special permit, that should also be true for, for townhouses.
All right, thank you, Janet. Andrew?
Thanks, Doug. I wanted to add a couple of small comments. I, I came out of the last meeting thinking that, you know, being very happy with what I was seeing, but hearing from, you know, my peers that some sort of phasing would, would make sense, and I, I wasn't really sure what would be a good way. I think Doug, your proposal, pretty logical one. And something that I could support, if we let, you know, limit it to certain zones. I guess another point I'd make just in the vein that Tom had mentioned, getting data is, I, I, it's not really clear to me how much this is going to affect existing construction or new construction, whether this is really gonna drive kind of more conversions, people, you know, redesigning their existing house, in which case the impacts to the, to the character might be minimal versus new construction where, you know, there could be some significant change, and, you know, to Janet's point around making sure that we have some some, some guidelines around design, I think would be important for those new buildings especially. If it is limited to areas where we already have densification, or density rather, then I suspect it's gonna be more of the conversions, in which case probably less of an impact on design. So, you know, if we do phase it where we start in that area, that would give us time to think through some of the design standards, and maybe we can kind of roll this in. I'm also, though, you know, as I think about limiting the, the scope of, we'll just call it a pilot for lack of a better term here, is that you know, is that going to affect any change in the near term? Right? If we, if we identify areas to focus in on, and there really just aren't the opportunities either for new construction or conversion, are we just kind of kicking this can down the road a little bit longer and haven't introduced any new housing? So overall, still very positive, still feel, feel very good about what's happening here, and I think, you know, what's been proposed by some of my peers already is, is, I think, a really stepped in the right direction. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Andrew. Bruce, you're next.
I'm broadly supportive of most of what's been said, specifically, I think, Doug, I I'm more supportive of the notion in the two districts that you mentioned. And I'm certainly supportive of Tom's and Andrew's sense that we need some evidence that what is being proposed will actually achieve the goals, because as I said last week, I really don't see how that can possibly, it doesn't feel like it's going to happen to me. It seems to me just increasing the housing supply isn't going to first and foremost provide us with additional workforce housing. I think it's, it's more likely to go into the, into the student home market. And, and that would make me less supportive of this if I thought that that was the, the primary slice, section of the market that was going to be expanded here. I like the goals of this, but I just don't, I can't, I can't, I don't have evidence that those goals are going to be achieved by what's being proposed. Therefore, as with Tom and Andrew, I'd like, I, I would like to see some introductory phased in way of introducing this and, and testing it and, and, and seeing if it can be demonstrated that the objectives will be met. That's important. I, I support Janet's observations about that the RRO and RLD are probably the least preferable candidates for this, this change. And finally, the one thing that I might add, that hasn't been said, is that I'm more broadly supportive of making duplexes, owner-occupied duplexes and affordable duplexes, elevating them to a by right status. I, I think I can be persuaded that that would be functional, because I think that the, because I think that with those two housing types, the objectives that are being stated are more likely to be met. So that, I think, is broadly where I stand.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. Tom?
Thanks, Doug. I, I guess I'm, I'll start with a question, and I think it has some relevance to how we might think about deploying this as well, and, and that is, do any of these homes with, I, I've read through them, but I'm, I can't, I can't be quite sure whether a duplex, triplex, townhouse, apartment building, do any of these have a discrepancy or have a distinction of being rented or owned? And my sense is that I would probably support buildings built to be owned in certain zones versus rented in certain zones, and I think the condition of how it will be, how one, whether ownership is our goal, or whether more rentals is our goal, again, will determine who the end user is, and where that affordable housing for, or let's say starter homes could be deployed in certain zones. So maybe you can answer the question, is there any stipulation about how they can be used, and do we, or whether it will be owned or rented, and do we have any say over that?
Mandy, that's a question, I think, for you.
Um, so certainly there is for duplexes, right? There are three use categories. There is an owner-occupied use category, and at least the definition is at least one of those units in that duplex must be owner-occupied, and it must be recorded on, the proposal is that it must be recorded on the deed at the Hampshire Registry of Deeds. And the second use category is affordable duplex. That does not require an owner occupancy requirement for either of the two units, but it does require that at least one of those units be listed on the state housing inventory for affordable housing, and, and also that that be listed on a deed. So in those two, so for duplexes, there are three different uses proposed. Well, they're already in the bylaw, and we're proposing different permitting pathways depending on which category of duplex there is. We did not do that with triplexes. We just proposed one. We have received some feedback from the Housing Trust that they would be supportive of splitting triplexes up in the same way that duplexes are split up in terms of an owner-occupied triplex, a affordable triplex, and a non-owner-occupied triplex. And this, Pat and I have not formal, formally talked about that yet, but we'd like to hear your response and thoughts on potentially splitting those up too. And my understanding is for converted dwellings and townhomes, the zoning bylaw is neutral on the ownership of those, but Chris would better be able to state and confirm that.
All right, thanks, Mandy Jo. Chris, do you want to comment on that or not? You just, just, just to, it sounds like what Mandy Jo is accurate, it's neutral on the ownership?
I believe so.
Okay.
But is there, so there is no way for us to, for instance, within a particular zone, say, it would be okay to build a, a set of townhouses if they were meant to be purchased by the owners rather than rented? And, and I think that's what I'm getting at in terms of the, the difference between whether we're building a bunch of rentals or we're building actual homes, small duplex or let's say, townhouse homes that people would, would own, like a condo or whatnot, and, and is there any way for us to make a stipulation on what? Homes that people would, would own like a condo or, or whatnot. And, and is there any way for us to make a stipulation of what happens in each zone? I think that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Chris?
Generally speaking, the zoning bylaw doesn't get into ownership issues or rental issues. Um, it's very rare that it does. And we did dip our toe into that when we established owner occupied. And non-owner occupied duplexes, but otherwise we don't really recognize whether someone, um, owns a place or rents a place. Certainly, um, townhouses can be developed as condominiums and we have several examples of that. In town and we have, um, examples of townhouses being developed as rental property and then turning into condos. So that's kind of a fluid situation. But there's not usually a requirement that something like that be owner occupied or non-owner occupied. It's certainly something we could explore with our, uh, town attorney and see how, how far we could get.
I mean, another way to think about it would be if we. Essentially reduced the dimensional requirements for what would turn into row houses. You know, you own your row house, but you're, you're. You know, sixteen or twenty-four feet, uh, of width and by a hundred feet depth, deep or whatever. And, um. You know, there's one unit per lot and, uh. And they just happen to all share party walls. So that's another. Typology that's similar to townhouses, but is clearly owner occupied. Or at least one owner per. Structure.
Yeah, I mean, my, that, that's, that's interesting, Doug. I mean, I think my, my concern there is, you know, how do we start to imagine who the end user will be? But we're talking about certain zones and can we control who those end users might be by saying? If someone is, if, if we're asking people to buy something, we're building a community, if we're asking to rent it. It's going to be someone who's going to turn over, which doesn't mean that they can't buy it and rent it later, but I guess, I guess I'm just, I'm just curious if they're, you know.
Right.
Something we can think about as, as time goes on.
All right, Tom. Uh, Janet.
I think this is a great discussion because one of my, you know, questions was how do we make space in Amherst for middle and low income residents? You know, given the intense student housing demand, plus, you know, the, the prices that, you know, students or their parents are paying. Um, and also builders will build to the higher end of the market. Almost always, right? So you, you know, you're going to make more money on an eight hundred thousand dollar house than a four hundred thousand dollar house. So I think the idea of, um, giving some more, um, an easier permitting path when you know that the, um. Converted dwelling or the townhouse is going to be owner occupied. Would create, would assuage or alleviate a lot of the concerns of people in the RG that they're just, you know, basically. You know, kind of, you know, getting house by house is, is slowly turning into, you know, a student housing. Neighborhood and people are leaving. And so I think that's an interesting idea. I just wanted to make a quick note that both on subdivisible dwellings and converted dwellings, they do talk about owner. Um, occupancy as a factor. Um, and you know, like with the converted dwellings. You know, it says the proposed conversion shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which it's proposed. Um, the conversion, if it's in a residential district, shall either be. Located in an area close to heavily traveled streets, close to business. Um, blah, 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 blah. Um, and, and shall require owner occupancy or a resident matter manager. In one of the units and then it goes on. So that, that issue pops up in both of those. And, you know, I think, I think this also. You know, I, one of my questions was what is the history and the purpose of these kind, this language or these restrictions or? You know, why did town meeting or the planning department of the select board, why did they pick this permitting pathway? Um, and we don't have any history of why in the RG we need a special permit for a duplex, you know, but. That history is there and I feel like we need that data. Um, I also think we need to have renderings. If, if we're, you know, saying, you know, triplexes that are, you know, stacked in three stories. Not a triplex actually in a, in a two and a half story building. I don't really care how it gets configured, you know, what could that look like? What would, you know, so we don't have renderings of. What can be built now and what can be built under the new proposals? Cause there is a change in density. In a lot of the proposals. Um, but I do think that we need some kind of guardrails to make sure that we're keeping space for. You know, regular folk like middle and low income families or individuals that. You know, if we're building a townhouse or a building, you know, a converted dwelling. With an easier permitting path that we know that there's going to be space. And I actually think we could say. No more than, you know, forty or fifty percent can be rented to students. And making sure that whatever you build or convert, there's always space for non-students in a neighborhood because that builds better community. And kind of keeps the balance a little bit more. Um. So, but I, I do like the idea of like, how can we? You know, make sure that the zoning change leads the housing that we want. And I am hoping that. We have some examples of other college towns that have dealt with this. I know we're all grappling with the same thing. Some research saying, oh, you know, Ann Arbor did this, you know, so and so did that. Or no, did this. I, I just feel like we're not really, we just need some more information about. And about what actually worked and what were the impacts and not just hopes that it's going to work out.
All right. Thank you, Janet. Um, I'll, I'm going to make a couple of comments. One is, um. You know, Janet, uh, your suggestion that we need more data or examples or renderings. Um, you know, obviously we don't have the resources to bring those. Uh, for the staff to, to bring those kinds of things to the conversation. And we have a, a firm proposal on the table. Excuse me, that we have to deal with now. So. Uh, if you are able to find any data like that and you want to have that available for your consideration. I think it's really incumbent on, on each of us to. Do whatever we think we need to do in order to be able to decide how to vote on these things. Um, I guess the other thing I'll say. Is that we have, we have multiple problems in this town. We have a shortage of student housing and we have a shortage of. Uh, middle income and worker housing. And I think, uh. We, we can't solve the second one without somehow dealing with the first one. And I feel like we're so far behind on. Providing housing for the students in this town. That it could actually be a while before we see. Improvement in the worker housing and middle income housing availability. Uh. Just because there's so many students that, that are unmet, you know, their, their demands are unmet. Uh, there's houses being constructed in Hadley and East Hampton and Belcher Town. Just because of the fact that we haven't got, all the students would like to be here in town, but they're not able to be. So, um. You know, I think. I, I don't think we will be able to. Target the housing as easily as we want. And, but I, I guess I always feel like more housing at the moment is better than no less housing. Or no more housing. Just because. More housing will solve one or the other of those problems and both need to be solved. All right, Andrew.
Thanks Doug. Um. So, you know, I've been. I kind of wrestle with the, the homeownership versus the rental component, um. Because, um. You know, just buying a house is really expensive as well, right? So like if, if we say, well. Let's, let's try to put some controls to require these things to be owner occupied. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to open up housing for. No, um, workforce, uh, populations because they can't afford it. Um, I'm also wondering, you know, the same way, um. The same way that we approach. Um, you know, providing housing units for low and moderate income people in apartments. You know, we've, we've talked about the importance and, you know, just science in general, the importance of having. Uh, these communities, you know, together. And, um, so an idea just popped in my head, probably not a good one, but. You know, what if, what if the answer is just? No more than one unit can be student housing. Right? And then like, if we do that, then perhaps we're forcing more, um. You know, more kind of cohabitation, but you know, it might, um, then. Provide some actual avenues for us to meet the needs of workforce as well as student. Um, so anyhow, I hadn't really thought through that too much, but it did seem like that could be a simple way around this, um, of just. Um, providing the limit on that side. Don't worry about owner or renter. Um, occupied, the, if the idea is just to try to get more housing in general, um, it could be approached that way. So. Thanks.
All right. All right, um. Mandy Jo, I know you, you may be close to the time you need to leave. Uh, the conversation started out with sounding kind of like a consensus. And then it's sort of devolved and, and spread out further. Um, it, I think my current off the top of my head, uh. Perception is that we're more supportive of. Uh, implementing something like what you are proposing in the RG and RBC districts. Uh, we're less interested in it in the outlying districts farther, farther out, um. And, uh. There's a lot of conversation about duplexes and how they get, how they get dealt with and, and, and triplexes. So. Um, I don't know if we can actually legislate. Student rentals and non-student rentals, but, uh, there's clearly some interest in that. I will say that. By limiting the number of student rentals in any one area, we are probably spreading the students around further into. Around Amherst rather than having them concentrated in a zone. And, um, you know, some towns have a student area. And all the students live there and then everybody else is further away from them and can live in more, uh. Quiet and peace. Uh, and then some, some towns may distribute them more and then they're, they're more of a presence throughout the town. All right. So I see three hands from board members. Uh, Mandy, why don't you go ahead before, if you were about to leave?
Yeah, thank you. I do have to leave soon. I just wanted, this is a great conversation and it is quite helpful. Um, and I hope it will continue even though I'm going to have to leave. I will watch the video. Unfortunately, I won't be able to respond to anything. Or answer any questions after I leave, but I did want to respond to a couple of things and correct a couple of things. Um, we have not actually removed the language, um, regarding, um, surrounding neighborhoods within our duplex category. We still have in there that two family detached dwellings or three family detached dwellings shall have an external appearance and footprint compatible. In terms of design with those of single family dwellings in the surrounding neighborhoods. And with converted dwellings, we've put in a requirement that they have to meet the. Standards for their most close use. So if a converted dwelling would go to a two family, it would still have that standard for three families have that standard. In there. I didn't have time to, you know, and so. That compatibility is still in, um, most of the uses, if not all of them, um. Uh, we talked about the owner occupied requirements for duplexes. Um, I want to address the RN issue. Um, Doug mentioned that RN is, um, quite diverse. Um, Janet indicated that apartments aren't allowed. Yes, in the use category on the use table, apartments aren't allowed, but. In fact, the RN zone is probably the zone that has the most apartments in town. Um, in building wise, because the RN zone is where Puffton is, it's where Brandywine is, it's, um, everything off of East Hadley Road is an RN. So despite the use table saying they're not allowed, they are actually quite prevalent in the RN zone. Um, so that's one of the reasons we believe they're appropriate in the RN zone, that townhouses are appropriate. I would say townhouses are different than apartments. Yes, they might have. Sometimes similar numbers of units, um, but townhomes must have entrances at the ground floor for every unit. Which makes it a great transitional type of housing between that more dense apartment mixed use building. And the less, less dense three families, two families and single family homes because all units have entrances. On the ground floor. Um. Density, uh, in fact, we're not really increasing density in most of this. The only place where we would technically be increasing any density is if you're changing a no use to some other use. Because a no use doesn't allow it. And so changing that no to a special permit. You could argue increases density, but if it's, if it's already a site plan review, changing it to a yes, there's no change in allowable density. Because it's already allowed. Um, you could argue that. Changing from a special permit to site plan review, we could argue whether or not it changes density, but we're not changing the dimensional tables. At all. We haven't proposed that. And so if the use is already allowed. Either by special permit, site plan or site plan review, the density is not changing, I would say. It's only in those places we've proposed. Going from no, where that use is not allowed to some other permitting pathway. Um, I haven't heard much about the business zone proposals, so I think some thoughts on that. Because we're talking a lot about the residential sides would be helpful. Just to give Pat and I some guidance, there are some changes proposed to the BL, BBC and BN sections. So just, just a thought, if you guys want to talk about that, it would be helpful for us to hear that. Um, and I would actually like to hear a little bit more about potentially about the designs. Guidelines that people are aiming for, particularly with respect to duplexes, um. As compared to single family homes and why. Duplexes should not be treated the same as single family homes with respect to design guidelines. Um, that's the, the way Pat and I approached this. And so just saying we need them. We'd like to hear more about that thought comparing them to a single family home because we do not have any design stance. Guidelines for single family homes and I don't hear anyone thinking about putting them in. Um, so those are just some of my responses to things I heard, um, other things that would be helpful for us to. And hear about. Um, as you continue this discussion, I'm sorry, I can't stay any longer, but I promise I will listen to this once it is posted. And Pat and I, when we come back for the hearing, we'll try and. Um. Change, you know, our presentation will try to address a number of these and potentially may have changes based on these conversations. So I thank you for that. I hope it continues to go very well and I'm sorry I do have to leave though.
All right. Thank you, Mandy Jo. All right. The next hand is Bruce's.
Oh, um, I was going to respond to you Doug, uh, a little bit. Andy Jo's put a lot of things in the air. Um, but I'm going to try to, uh, ignore that except for the design guidelines for duplexes and so forth, which. I recall I'll, I'll finish with, but, um. I recall you said that, uh. Where to start here? I, I. I'm, uh, I'm, I'm concerned, uh, as I've said about whether the goals will be, uh. Uh, materialized and. Andrew, uh, said that, and Tom have said, um. Uh, uh, some kind of, uh. Attention to the density of, uh. Of, of student housing or student rentals or houses that have, have, uh, student occupied. Um. It could be a useful, um. Addition to this and, and, uh. I've got to say that this is where I've really been putting a lot of my time this past week or, or two. Um. It seems to me that having a definition of a student home, uh, a, a use that is actually defined. Uh, would make it possible to do that and, and, um, and I, and, and, um. Inconsistent with what you said earlier Doug about if, if, if we should, we, we should not expect to rely on. A very short staffed, uh. Uh, town hall to get us the answers to some of the questions we feel we need in order to make whatever decision we need to make on this. So accordingly, I've decided to put a lot of effort into trying to understand this. Um, and, um, I'll probably speak more about this once I've done the work, but I'm. I'm gearing up to, uh, find out as much as I can from. Uh, what I might identify as being the, the twelve or fifteen most, uh. Similar communities to Amherst around the country. And then talking to people in those communities and. And, uh, getting answers to, uh, I don't know, eight or a dozen questions that I'm gradually refining. So I'm going to, I'm committing to doing that and I, and part of, uh. Um. Why I want to do that is Andrew, what you just said about what I guess they're called minimum distance requirements or density of student accommodations. Also defining what we mean by that. And, uh, so I, I'm, I'm going to. Do what I can to help, uh, certainly myself and perhaps others. Uh, by gathering these data and, uh, and, uh, and making it available. Um. Uh. The, the, uh, the question about design standards with duplexes and so forth. I've always found rather interesting because, uh, when we were designing our co-housing community here. It was around duplexes. That's how we got the density that we needed. So we basically went through just a string of special permits. Um, and, uh. And what I personally then was quite concerned about was that these duplexes should not look like duplexes. And, uh. And what the way we've done it here is. And what the way we've done it here is we've made them basically attached cottages and we've used a common entry to link two small masses. And so it's a duplex, but it doesn't look like a duplex. Secondly, when with Habitat, I was designing. The house that's next to the farmhouse on North Pleasant Street, there's a Habitat House duplex there. In order to make it fit well, the design was. A two story and a single story, so it looks like one big house. It looks actually quite similar to the house next door, which is the NACF, the Simple Gifts Farmhouse. But so that's another way, which you might say a design standard of creating a duplex out of a single story unit and a two story unit, it it it. But when you have two two story units which are right next to each other with a common roof line and two doors in the middle. And it's a simple block mass. That's when I think duplexes start to look clumsy. And so I think it is true that we can. Even amongst ourselves probably generate some design guidelines that would create more agreeable duplexes, particularly in in zones where there are. Single family houses, so I. I support the idea of doing that, but I think that's. Always been our intention, hasn't it, to maybe not throughout town, but to create design guidelines that will help boards like ours. Make better decisions. So I like that idea as well, although I'm not present committing to doing that for all of these units. I did think Mandy Jo's answer to the townhouse question, Janet, was a. Was a good one. The the idea that the townhouse is defined by having doors that. They become more like row houses, more more urban in quality and so forth, but diminished in scale because they have to always. Have an entry and have a presence on the street. I think that's enough for me.
I'm excited to see what you what you find out from your research and your. Your other work. Janet, you are next.
This is probably where we would be useful to have someone from the ZBA here because. They're the ones who are doing all the duplexes, right? And so in in. In the use chart, there it requires that in all districts, a special permit granting authority. Shall apply the provisions of section 3.0, 3.2040. And 3.2041, and this should get Tom's attention because these are the standards the the design review board. Applies in the downtown district. And so that's what the ZBA is applying to duplexes. And I actually, that language is stripped out by these amendments. And so and then the language in converted dwellings that has more extensive kind of design guidelines is also stripped out. And then we just lose subdivisible dwellings completely. So I would think that. You know, there there are duplexes in my neighborhood that look just like houses and you kind of have to kind of look to see that they are. So I assume that the ZBA is applying these. Design review standards, and I would suggest that they should apply to all multi-family houses. You know, so it it always should look good. It always should fit in to a neighborhood. So and I think it actually by requiring it to fit in and look good like it belongs in the neighborhood, you're going to create a lot more acceptance of multi-unit housing. And so if you know, I think that the people who do this best are. I can't, I always forget the group, Valley CDC, who's building. A lot of affordable units around North Hampton and Amherst. I think their housing fits in. Better than most of the other for-profit buildings I've seen going around because they're very sensitive and I've heard. People in Housing Trust, one of the person who creates a lot of housing, say they really make a huge effort to make sure it looks good and fits in the neighborhood. Because they know they're going to have opposition and they know they're increasing density, so they want to fit into sort of a New England style of housing, so. I really would think we should leave that language into duplexes. And if we are going to expand, we should apply it to any multi-family housing, so we have a clear, consistent, give the boards a chance or, you know, to basically say. You know, we're fine on this, you know, four unit converted dwelling, but it it we have to make it so it fits in. And doesn't look like just a big concrete block or your addition is kind of ugly and stuff like that. We do have language sort of pared down for ADUs. So I I think my recommendation is let's take, you know, section 3.2040 and just apply it to all multi-unit housing. And I think people will feel better about what's being built. They'll feel better about the density. And they'll know that their concerns are being addressed, which the the ZBA does really well with their special permits. They listen to the neighborhoods. Neighbors, they make adjustments, they make accommodations and they issue permits. I have a question. For Chris about affordable duplexes, because when I look at this. You know, the current use table, I kind of wonder, like, is anyone building an affordable duplex? Because. It just mean have any, like, how many have been built in the last five years? Are people building owner occupied duplexes? You know, or how many owner occupied duplexes have been converted to. An owner occupied ones here.
So the primary builders of affordable duplexes is Habitat, Habitat for Humanity. They've built two. Affordable duplexes, one on East Pleasant Street and one on North Pleasant Street, one that Bruce was just referring to. It's unlikely, in my opinion, that. A single person owning a house would. Build an affordable duplex because, well, it depends on what his motivation is. If his if he's motivated to. House, you know, humanity, then he may, in fact, want to build an affordable duplex, but most people build houses because they want to make money. Either by renting them or by selling them. And so building an affordable duplex would not. Provide the developer with. A lot of money. So really, I would say affordable duplexes are. Primarily for institution institutions like Habitat for Humanity. The other thing is for an affordable duplex, if if it were actually going to be affordable capital A, it would have to be on the. State SHI, the housing inventory. And it takes a lot of effort to get a unit on the housing inventory. There's a lot of paperwork. And if you're really interested in getting into this, Nate Malloy is here and he can tell you all about that. But we personally think that Nate and I believe that the average person is not going to want to engage in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right, Bruce.
I think maybe Chris is bulldozed over what I, but all I was going to say that I heard from Mandy Jo tonight, something which clarified a lot of things a little for me, which was that only one of the two units needed to be. Affordable in order to. To make it defined as such within this bylaw or at least proposed change. So I agree with most of what she's, all of what Chris says, but it is possible that somebody might decide to. To create one side affordable for whatever reason, and one of those reasons might be just in order to make it a buy right thing without having to go through the rigmarole. So but I that so that was useful for me to register that and I thought, do I care about that? And I thought, no, that still fits my my sense of comfort with a buy right. But it did, it did change the notion, because I thought as Chris did, that. That affordable duplex was always going to be a habitat thing, that's such a low volume and it really is, it's it's the least consequential of the proposed changes. But it does step it up a little bit just with that potential wrinkle, but it's a wrinkle, if I understand it correctly. But doesn't make it. It I retain my view that a buy right. Allocation for that in any zone is okay. At the moment.
All right. Thanks, Bruce. I I'm going to channel Mandy Jo a little bit in response to Janet, to your comment about the design guidelines for duplexes. I think one of their purposes was to try to remove obstacles to the creation of duplexes. And treat them more like single family homes. And so I think they, that's the reason that they were proposing that they just become a yes. Rather than a site plan review that's going to need a lot of. Process and registry of deed registration and. An application of the design guidelines. I guess as a sort of intellectual. Exercise, I could ask, well, why don't we have design guidelines applied to single family homes? If I want to build a single family home in an existing neighborhood. Don't the neighbor concerns about scale and. You know, massing and citing, all all of those still apply to a neighbor. And so why wouldn't we just do that all the time? Nobody needs to answer that, but I think that's that's kind of a reasonable question to be asking about. Why do, when do we really want to do that? All right, Janet, I'll I'll call on you and I do know that there is one hand from the public that's been up for a while, so. Tara LaRaja, I will be calling on you after Janet. Go ahead, Janet.
So she said that there wasn't any lowering of design guidelines, and so I was correcting that. And I think it'd be interesting to see what the ZBA does with that. And there's a few other sections of the amendments that strip off language about design controls. I understand what you're saying about single family homes, but I think that. You know, there's, we want to encourage multi-family housing in Amherst. We want it to fit in. We don't want to have neighborhoods overrun by students. And what's, how do we get there? And so we've all talked about some suggestions about reserving space for people. But I think that, you know, a duplex that is attractive and looks good, I mean, I think we've had a fair amount of those. Happening and no one notices them. And I think if it's a triplex. Or a quadplex or a converted dwelling or a subdivitable dwelling. Or a townhouse, it all should look good. We don't have, you know, we don't apply the design review board criteria to townhouses. I think we should. I mean, we need design controls and so. I think we should encourage that. I don't think they're onerous and I think it's easy to do, especially with the duplex. But Mandy Jo was saying, oh, we're not changing that. And she's also saying we're not changing density. And yet when RO and RLD, she was, even though it's in the use table, there's requirements for extra units. That you have to have either 1,000. You know, extra square feet or 2,000, and those got removed also. So. There's a lot of like complexity to this and the impacts are, you know, we can document them and show them. I don't particularly feel like I have to present renderings. But I really think people need to see what will it look like? What could it look like to have? A 10 unit townhouse in the middle of a field, you know, with a driveway going up, you know, in the RO or the RLD. If someone is proposing that, I think the burden is on Pat and Mandy Jo to show that's what it's going to look like. You know, I think we're probably have a consensus that we don't think that is that density is appropriate for these lands. But I do think, you know, what does it look like? Because that's how to impact on, you know, things that we've looked at before in the BL. When you looked at the calculations and you did the picture, it was kind of like, oh, that's much more than what we wanted. Footnote M is the same situation. So if we're increasing density or reducing requirements, what is it going to look like? Is a pretty fair question for buildings.
All right. Thanks, Janet. All right. So I will now go to the public. Pam, if you'd bring up the timer. Why don't we start with three minutes and members of the public, I do want to cut you off at three minutes. So would you please tailor your comments to end before that deadline? All right, Tara LaRaja, why don't we bring you over?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please give us your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Taryn LaRaja and I live at Seven Strong Street. And I feel like I am in a kind of a unique position to speak because I own a home in a neighborhood right in this in this. I think it's the RG, is that what we're in? One of the the areas where you're where you're talking about making a change. And I also own a rental property that I rent to students. Onto at 265 East Pleasant Street, it attaches our back, backyards attach. And I also live next to. A new neighbor who rents to students and who recently tried by a special permit to convert a garage. To add another four students to the property and to pave over the backyard. And it just feels really, it's something I'm really worried about changing, not just for. Myself and our neighbors and our, you know, on Strong Street in East Pleasant, but in other downtown areas like this because. What? It just, when it gets to a point where when there's a conversion. Like this, there there's no going back to that ever being a a family. Occupied home. I would never think about trying to put another building on the rental property that we have at 2 East. At 265 East Pleasant Street, it would really ruin the property and it would not be fair to. It just doesn't seem like it would be the right thing to do. And I mean, I really feel like it's totally different when it's owner occupied and someone's putting like a unit for. Oh, I don't know, a study or, you know. In-law apartment, but to to just have students piled in to downtown. We've already seen like a really big change. We have a lot more students in recent years. And, you know, cars are everywhere. I mean, one of the things when you talk about density, it's like, why does there need to be? A parking space for every student if the bus stop is across the street and yet, you know, we're talking about. That being a requirement, paving over backyards. And I I just feel like it's it's a real concern and. You know, I I think, you know, I don't think we should kid ourselves that the these are going to be, you know, for workers. They're going to be for students because students will pay much more, and I can tell you that from my own experience. And, you know, it's different. I mean, I almost feel like it's owner occupied because we're right next door and and we make that really clear to the students who are renting from us. But I do think your idea about finding out what's working in other college towns. And before making any kind of changes and allowing like. Upon garage to be converted to more student housing, I really think it's going to really destroy our neighborhoods in Amherst, and I hope you won't allow it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Bruce Carson, why don't we bring Bruce over, Pam? And Bruce, if you'd give us your name and state your address, your street address. Hello, Bruce. You need to unmute. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm Bruce Carson at Eight Strong Street and I just wanted to thank you all for your service. I served on the planning board in the past, so I know how much hard work there is. I just have a couple of comments. One is. To concur with my neighbor, Taryn LaRaja, that. Be careful about unintended consequences such as parking lots in backyards. Which really would change the whole character of a neighborhood. If you're going to add more converted dwellings or units on. What are often very small lots in the town center. The parking is a big issue. The other point is. I don't believe that you could legislate. The number of student units versus nonstudent. I. I I believe from my time on the planning board that that's not possible legally. That that it would be considered discrimination. So I think when you create housing, it's for everybody. And and as Taryn said. Since students can pay more or their parents pay more. And that is the biggest market in town, I think that's going to remain so. So that's just something to keep in mind. Also, I. Really agree with Ms. McGowan that design standards are so important. Because, and I know what you're saying about single family homes aren't under those requirements, but. You're talking about taking structures on existing lots that are not now used for housing and turning them into housing. Or adding housing on those lots, which does. Change the character of the neighborhood and I think it's good to keep within that character by having design standards. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, and next is Jennifer Tao.
Where did she, where did she go?
Jennifer? Looks like she took her hand down. So how about Elizabeth Verling? Hello, Elizabeth. You can. There you go.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Elizabeth Verling, 36 Cottage Street. So I have a number of things I wanted to say. First, it should be abundantly clear to anyone who listens to the news that the housing crisis is not unique to Amherst, but it's a state and nationwide issue. However, what is unique to Amherst, along with other college towns, is the high student to permanent resident ratio, which has a major impact on our town in many ways. is the high student to permanent resident ratio, which has a major impact on our town in many ways. So I don't know the answer, certainly by any means, but there need to be more targeted and creative ways to ensure that the Amherst student population does not dominate the town to the exclusion of permanent residents. Therefore, I really appreciate Bruce Colton's goals of understanding how successfully or unsuccessfully college towns have dealt with this issue. Um, I also wanted to mention that there's been the suggestion that shouldn't we want for climate change, et cetera, to have the students close in? But what about the 4,000 UMass staff who could be permanent residents here, but can't afford it? This is a population that's barely mentioned and that we should want to facilitate to live close. Um, so I'm hardly a zoning or development expert. Not by any stretch of the imagination, but the proposals, as I can understand them seem to me like trickle down housing analogous to trickle down economics, which I don't think is really viable. And that's why I think we need to have more creative ideas. So anyway, I hope that the focus can really be not just on changing zoning, but on developing approaches and programs. So we might get what we really want and need, which is housing for permanent residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Uh, next I see John Varner's hand. We bring him over. Hello, John. Uh, you can unmute yourself and give us your name and street address.
Yeah, I'm John Varner, 54 Jeffrey Lane. Uh, I actually went through Mandy and Pat's proposal at length and it is extremely complicated and full of a lot of dense verbiage and abbreviations, acronyms, et cetera, that make it a little difficult for people to actually focus. It's a very lengthy proposal. I wish it had been broken up into chunks and implemented again. People have stated in, in pieces, uh, not blanketing the whole town as, as the proposal is currently doing now. Uh, I don't think zoning should be left up to any one individual. And I think the idea of taking categories of housing and putting them under the domain of a single individual is just going to open the town up to to litigation and with the butters of approved projects taking the town to court because it's been one person and not the zoning board that has changed the, uh, the regulations. I think zoning is a contract between citizens and the town and it should not be changed in a willy nilly fashion. But moving on, uh, there are communities across the country and I've talked at length with the zoning commissioner of State College, Pennsylvania, where Penn State is located. Uh, they track student housing as a specific category. Uh, it is not a constitutional issue for them. Uh, I don't know if Massachusetts is somehow different, but it works in some jurisdictions. Uh, I don't know how the town is currently tracking economic and social segregation and which properties are currently student occupied. I know they are not doing that. And I think that getting data like that is essential to addressing the problems that you're trying to address. Students are always going to be competing with people of modest means for rental housing. And the fees of rental houses in Amherst get are going to be interlocked with the fees that UMass charges for dormitories. And I don't understand how, um, these proposals are going to change that dynamic. There are supposed to be, uh, multiple choice places for homeownership opportunities. Sounds lofty, but does this create housing for people of lower moderate income in Amherst sub-scale areas? Does it encourage the affluent to move into affordable apartment complexes? Does this predom- or does predominantly create homeownership opportunities for people who are investors and to expand their investment?
You have 30 seconds left.
Right. Dormitories are more sustainable than apartments. I don't know why dormitory is not brought into this with their common spaces, hallways, laundries, eating facilities, bathrooms, uh, all being shared. They're much more economic, much more environmentally sensitive. And that seems to be a big push in this proposal, environmental sensitivity. And I think that that would be a better use of, uh, real estate and resources. Uh, and finally, is there a community outside of Rust Belt where real estate, uh, prices have actually decreased recently? I don't think so. And I don't think any proposal that's on the board is going to do that. Uh, I have more to say, but
All right.
And, uh, more comments will probably appear in Amherst in the, uh, for reference. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next we have Janet Keller. Hello, Janet. Give us your name and your street address. You can unmute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great. Janet Keller, I live at 120 Pulpit Hill Road up in North Amherst. And, um, I want to join the crew that is urging you to be very careful and prudent in keeping design standards. It's, uh, they're much more important to our well-being than, than we give them credit for. I also want to put in a strong plea for putting a butter notices back in for all of these projects. They, it's a tiny little bit of the cost of the application for the proponent and it's critical for, uh, a butter is often know more about the area, um, and what's going on and can point things out. And, um, I, I think it's really very important. Um, I, um, let's see. I think Tom's idea about getting data and models is incredibly important and, um, zoning is just a, a, a bunch of words to most people and having those, uh, requiring those kinds of, uh, of illustrations before something is decided and before it's too late to change something that would be a mistake, I think is critically important. And I appreciate, um, the care that, uh, that you folks have devoted to this discussion and, um, appreciate the opportunity to be heard. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, the last hand from public I see is Jennifer Tao. We bring her over and Jennifer, if you'd give us your street address.
Okay, thank you.
We cannot hear you very well.
Can you hear me now?
A little bit better. Yeah. Yeah. It's still a little bit quiet, but go ahead.
Uh, let me, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Not too loud, I hope. Um, thank, I'm sorry. Um, see, I'm Jennifer Tao. I live at 259 Lincoln Avenue and I did, I have a comment and a kind of a clarification because what I heard is that you would like, you're, the suggestion is, is been made to begin in the RG and the RVCs. But in the RG district where I live and, you know, who I represent, you can already have duplexes, triplexes and townhouses. So that is not a big, is not a change. Um, and we don't really need to do a pilot to see what happens with those duplexes, triplexes and townhouses because it's been happening for years. And those multifamily housing are overwhelmingly rented to students and they're expensive student rentals at, at that. So by way of an example, just this afternoon, I mean, Bruce was there because he's also a member of the local historic district commission. Um, the owner of a property on Fearing Street, what's basically a single family house there. It was a single family house for years. Then it was converted into a triplex to be rented to students, not really a very, a huge lot. They're now proposing to add three four bedroom units to that lot, plus the three units in the front house. So they could have 36 students living there. And they, they were very open about the fact those are all for students. So we, again, you know, we don't have to see what will happen because it's already happening. And I personally don't think it's the responsibility of the town of Amherst to house all the students that need and want to live off campus and to specifically ask the RGs to continue to be the districts that absorb even more students is really targeting one district to bear the burden of what, you know, understandably, other parts of town want to avoid. And if you're asking the RG to absorb all these zoning changes, and again, you know, duplexes, triplexes and townhouses are already permitted here. But to combine that with relaxing the permitting standards is really creating an untenable situation. And that we just had a townhouse complex. It's, uh, in the process of being constructed on Fearing and Sunset in the RG. And it made an enormous difference to the community that, that applicant had to go through before the zoning board of appeal and through the special permitting process. And it would be, I, I just don't see any reason for relaxing the permitting, uh, process and the regulatory standards, but to combine that with accelerating development is a double whammy that really no district should be.
15 seconds left.
Okay. I would also ask, I understand that planning department is understaffed, but I think that these zoning changes being proposed are so sweeping that we should do everything we can to heed Janet's suggestion, um, that we see drawings that are built out before we adopt. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next hand is from Pam Rooney. Bring her over. Hello, Pam. If you'd give us your name and your street address.
Hi, this is Pam Rooney, 42 Cottage Street. Uh, the previous speaker actually covered a lot of what I was going to say. I think the RG has been the, has, has borne the brunt of, of a lot of the absorption of extra housing in town. Uh, when I was walking around with campaign brochures, I was astounded by the number of converted dwellings within the RG that exist today. I need to ask a very direct question and that is why, if someone could tell me why it is the responsibility of the town of Amherst to house the increasingly, uh, the increasing number of UMass students who can no longer find homes on the campus? Why is it the responsibility? I think, I think Chairman Marshall said this. But why is it our responsibility to absorb this increase? We have no control over the increase of the enrollment. And for years, so between, between the year 2000 and the year 2020, there were at least an additional 8,000 students added to the rolls. Not counting university without walls, not, not, you know, not counting the people who only worked online. It was, it was over 8,000 students that were added that the town and the surrounding communities end up having to absorb. Please tell me why we, especially in the RG, are responsible for absorbing them. I think the, the folks who come forward to propose housing and dwelling units in town seem to succeed. If they want to convert something, they seem to be able to do that. If they want to create townhouses at key intersections near the, near the campus, they seem to be able to do that. I, I really don't understand the, the need to relax the permitting structure to allow that to happen. So thank you for your in-depth and consideration of, of this question and, and this issue for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, I will point out, I think, I believe Pam is the liaison to the planning board from the town council. Uh, let's bring our last hand over. That's Dorothy Pam. Uh, Dorothy, if you'd give us your name and your address.
Hi, Dorothy Pam, 229 Amity Street, right in the middle of the RG. I just want to second many of the good comments from, uh, both on the planning board and from the public. I'm just commenting on a complete disconnect between the social and economic goals, which are clearly and poignantly stated in this zoning proposal because none of these suggestions will in fact result in, um, people being able, uh, social justice or minorities buying homes or being able to afford the rent or for workforce housing. And I, I am truthfully very confused. Why is there so little concern for the workforce housing? If you want to talk about who should live nearby, so many people in the neighborhood live, work for the university in one way or the other, are retired from the university. And there's a great need for housing that people who work for the university can afford, who, because not everybody gets a big salary. And, um, you know, we do have student housing that is successful in our RG. And that is mostly in the houses of owner occupied housing. Those students are integrated into our community, come to our brunches and don't cause any problems. In fact, create a lot of, um, help us out with our computers and, um, you know, give liveliness to the neighborhood. So we, we like having young people in the neighborhood, both families with children, and we like having students, but not in the way that's being proposed now, which is a pure profit giveaway for developers who are going to charge everything they can charge. And the students then, because they're paying such crazy rents for so little space, uh, are, you know, breaking the, um, the limit as to how many people can be in there. And, you know, Pam Rooney mentioned key intersections. We were told that we might be getting townhouses at the key intersections. But the proposal that Jennifer Tao was just mentioning is in the middle of a block. It's in the middle of a residential block of budding many, many pri- lawns of private houses. So it seems to us that there's a complete disconnect between the goals of, of what we're supposed to be doing, preserving a neighborhood and housing people connected to the university and housing students in good safe housing and, and this proposal. So I, I am very disappointed with it because there obviously are some changes that we should make. And I double support that the ZBA has been an extremely helpful board in making, uh, a, a conversation, leading a conversation between the developer and the surrounding community so that we can coexist with a certain amount of, um, happiness or acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Or, thank you, Dorothy.
That's okay. That's okay.
All right. Uh, that was the last hand from the public. And Bruce, we can go back to you. You've had your hand up for a while.
Yes, I, I, uh, Mr. Carlson said, uh, that he felt that students were a protected category, presumably under the Fair Housing Act. And I believe he is wrong. I think we can do all that has been suggested. And we should not, uh, uh, pay any attention to that particular piece of what he had to offer tonight. Does anybody know that I'm wrong on that?
I have heard the same thing, so I cannot, uh, contradict you, Bruce. They are not, they are not a protected class from a discrimination point of view.
Correct. We've, we, we deal with this consistently when we're selling houses in our co-housing community because we are very concerned and about people valuing community. And we've established that, uh, certain things are protected and certain things aren't. And we've, for many years have been paying very close attention to that and, uh, which is why I'm heading out on my little job because, uh, being able to identify a student home as a, as a, as a use is, uh, wouldn't be possible if, um, if, if Mr. Carlson was correct. And if he was correct, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't even begun to do what I'm doing.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. So it's now eight o'clock. We usually take a break at this time. I don't see any other hands up and I'm wondering whether we might consider closing our conversation for this evening on this topic and move on to the rest of our agenda after we come back. So, uh, I was going to give you five minutes to think about. Excuse me, to think about that. Um, and then we can continue or not, uh, when we come back at 5:806. Why don't we do that? So mute yourself and turn off your camera and we'll see you at 8:06. Thank you. Why don't we do that? So mute yourself and turn off your camera and we'll see you at eight oh six. Thank you.
Larger than the Fearing Lincoln neighborhood. I mean, I, I think I live in the RG and I don't think I'm feeling the pressure that they do necessarily. The, the pressure is mostly because of the geographic existence of that space kind of between downtown and UMass. Um, so it's not like the rest of us are trying to, you know, destroy them. But it, it's one of your location, location, location.
But I see the same impacts on Shumway Street, South Whitney, Main Street towards Amherst. I mean, you know, it's, it's a lot of, there's a lot of transition than even in the 20 years I've lived here in those very small streets between Main Street and Route nine. You know, they frankly look junkier and junkier and there's more and more cars. And so I don't think, I think that spillover effect is in a lot of neighborhoods. And so do we let that keep happening? And do we make that easier to happen without, you know, design controls and stuff like that? So I, I think it's, you know, I think it's something to talk about maybe on Tuesday in kind of a more holistic way.
Okay, uh, Bruce?
Yes, both Dorothy and Jennifer mentioning that thing that we were shown this afternoon at the local district commission hearing, wasn't a hearing, it was an informational meeting. And it was, as was said, a, a house on Fearing, which has become renovated as a triplex. And then in the backyard, we're proposing not one, not two, but three additional duplexes. And while we were on break, I thought, wow, I've just said that I'm comfortable with duplexes as a by right. And then uh, Chris, I'm wondering, I mean, did that mean that if, if, if we were to elevate duplexes to a by right, which is what's proposed, that that project that's proposed on Fearing Street, uh, which has got multiple duplexes on the same lot, would that be? Would, would, would I be supporting that as a by right entitlement?
Uh, Chris, I see your hand.
Because certainly that's not what I'm, not what I'm intending.
All the other zoning regulations still apply.
You still have immediate lot area and building area requirements, but I believe that Bruce is right. I think that that would be allowed by right because it, it, it would be a non-owner occupied duplex as defined by this proposal. So Nate was at the meeting, he's here now, he may want to say something, but in my opinion, um, that would be allowed by right. And I do think that that's kind of a bridge too far, in my opinion, again.
Way too far. You, you, you also, I commend you, you should all have a look at this damn thing. It's, I mean, it's designed by Chuck Roberts, who's not a silly man, but take a look.
Well, I wouldn't know where to find it, Bruce.
Oh, I mean, it'll, it'll show up, be ready for it when it comes.
Okay, I'll, I'll. At the Gazette, yeah, okay. All right, um, well, if people don't have more to say, maybe we can move on from that topic. Uh, the time now is eight twelve and we'll go on with the next item on our agenda, which I believe is old business. Chris, the first thing on the list here is legal ad fees. What would you like to say about that?
So my, my mind is getting a little fuzzy recently because I've had too many things in it. But I don't think I've talked to you recently about legal ad fees. Is that correct? I talked to Doug, but I don't think I've talked to the rest of the planning.
I don't think you have either.
Um, so last June, the planning board, we brought a topic to the planning board, the staff did. And the topic we brought was the fact that we were going way over our allotment for spending money on legal ads and um, the average price of a legal ad for, uh, you know, an application has gone way up. It used to be, you know, in the neighborhood of one hundred and fifty to maybe three hundred dollars and, and recently it's been more like six or seven hundred dollars. And recently it's gotten even more expensive than that. But we brought the topic to the planning board um, in hopes that the planning board would agree to raising the legal ad fee from what it had been, which was seventy five dollars up to three hundred dollars. And um, that we felt that the three hundred would cover half of the legal ad and that um, the town would cover the rest of it. And, and we were satisfied with that. Um, but the zoning board of appeals, um, they wanted to get into this topic as well. And they had discussions about it and they also voted to raise their legal ad fee to three hundred dollars, but they weren't really comfortable with that. They wanted to have a, a tiered approach to the legal ad fee. And they felt that they had some um, applications that were for owner occupied houses that, you know, wanted to expand and non-conformity or something like that, and that those should have a lower fee. And that um, things like, you know, what has been described in this conversation, um, the, the Barry Roberts project on Sunset Ave, which is, I think, going to have seventeen units, you know, maybe that project should have a legal ad fee that's closer to what the actual fee is, maybe that should be five hundred dollars. So anyway, the, the um, zoning board initiated this conversation uh, at its February ninth meeting. And um, I had spoken to Doug in sometime in the last few weeks about this topic and that the zoning board wanted to kind of try to have a meeting of the minds with the planning board and reach some agreement about, you know, lower, a lower fee for things that are small and a higher fee for things that are larger. Personally, I feel that that's too complicated and it leaves, it may leave it up to staff to determine whether something's um, a lower level project or a more complicated project. Sometimes it's clear, but sometimes it isn't clear. So I'd prefer to stick with the three hundred dollar fee. Anyway, when the zoning board discussed this last week, they decided that it wasn't, and, and I I explained to them that the planning board doesn't really have that many small projects that come along. The planning board is mostly dealing with larger things. And occasionally you do make a recommendation to the zoning board about, you know, a duplex or you made a recommendation about um, a project on North Pleasant Street, which involved putting a single family home on a site that already had a duplex. So you, you do those kinds of, those recommendations, but you, that doesn't require a legal ad. So the zoning board um, kind of backed off and they said, okay, well, we'll have our own discussion about this and we'll decide what we want to do about our legal ad fees. And we'll let the planning board make their own determination. So I'm just bringing this to you to tell you that this conversation is going on. And I guess to ask you if you feel that there's a need to reexamine our legal ad fees, or are you okay with a flat three hundred dollars for everybody? Which in my mind is the simplest way to go and it's also more fair than what we had in the past, which was the seventy five dollar fee. So.
Well, Chris, you've talked to me and I've already told you, but I'll share with the board. I, I'm fine with the three hundred dollars. I, I support that. Uh, Bruce?
Uh, question, Chris, how did the folks on Spaulding Avenue, which was the smallest project that we've had since I've been there? Was, uh, did they kick the three hundred dollars?
They have, they had the three hundred dollar fee, yeah.
Okay, so it seems fine.
Uh, Janet?
Um, I have a question. So, you know, I think the smallest projects we have had are those ATM things. Chris, do people have to do an ad when they come back to us, like with a lighting plan or a sign change or, you know, um, do they have to do a legal ad for that when they need to come back?
May I answer that?
Yes.
No, they don't need to come back if they're coming back to, um, say that they met a certain condition. The only thing they, we need to have legal ads for is for public hearings. So uh, that would be a public meeting, what you were describing Janet. So that would not require a legal ad.
Am I right, Chris, that the legal ad occurs when we are going to open the public hearing?
That's correct, yes.
Continue it however many times we continue it. We don't do additional ads.
No, and small projects like an ATM like Janet mentioned, that's, you know, Greenfield Savings Bank, they can afford three hundred dollars. So even though it's a small project, you know, it's, it's a corporation that's um, proposing this thing.
I mean, I'm, a part of my perspective was off, you know, if somebody's proposing to make some modification that allows them to add a rental unit to their house, you know, they're gonna get fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month for that forever. And three hundred dollars is just not that much in terms of the total expenditure they're gonna have to go through to build the thing. And then in terms of the revenue they're gonna get. So I'm, I'm not particularly receptive to reducing it for, for a single family conversations like that. Andrew?
Thanks Doug. Yeah, I'm fine with three hundred as well. Did we, I feel like when we talked about this maybe last year or two years ago, we had said just have the apps can pay for everything, right? Does that ring a bell or am I misremembering and then?
Yes, we bounced around. We, I think the conversation went back and forth. You know, I, I, I think we ended up at three hundred just as a compromise with some of the people who didn't want to impose a set six or seven hundred dollars. The other thing is that uh, staff doesn't always know how much it's gonna cost upfront when the person comes in for their application. So, you know, the timing is difficult, you know, you want the fee at the, at the start so that you can go and get the notice and you don't know what it is. Chris?
So the um, Conservation Commission requires that their applicants pay for the legal ad and they do spend time chasing that and they have to keep track of it. And um, they also only have to advertise once. So their legal ads are about half as much as ours are. There are ra, there's range between two and three hundred dollars, I think. So I just feel like it's an extra burden on staff to chase them, to get them to pay the legal ad fee. And if you require them to do it by themselves, then um, you're not sure that it's actually gonna happen or that it's gonna happen on time and time for the public hearing. So um, we like to control things and make sure that, yes, the legal ad has been placed. You know, yes, the, all the notices have gone out correctly and all that. So we want to take that on ourselves. We don't want the applicant to be responsible for that. And um, if we place a legal ad and we have to chase the applicant to help, to get them to pay for it, it's just too much complication, too much extra work for us. So that's kind of where we're coming from.
Thanks, Chris. Bruce?
Um, Doug, I, I agree with you when we're talking about the smaller uh, folks who might want to add a rental unit. Um, and they, they have a public hearing to, for the addition. But uh, am I right that once you are in that loop and you want to make changes down the line, you know, if you want to the uh, put a ramp in, for example, then uh, because you're part of a special permit process, uh, you can't just get a permit for the ramp, you have to come back to another public hearing. So it's quite possible that uh, these smaller uh, applicants uh, for subsequent uh, events like that would probably be finding that these uh, larger numbers would be maybe difficult to, or would be onerous. So I, I, and I think the, the planning, I can see why the zoning board therefore is going to want to do that. And but if, if, if it's very unusual for us, uh, then uh, except it won't be if we, if the zoning changes go through and we suddenly find ourselves uh, dealing with a lot of uh, duplex permits so forth. So maybe we'll do it then, but, but I'm, I just want to bear in mind that once you're in this loop and you want to do small things in the future, then you're still generating all these never ending public meetings.
Yeah, that's a good point. That actually, I think I mentioned that when Chris and I talked, that you know, maybe we should be making a whole lot more things in town by right. So that you don't have to get into this loop and require the public hearing and the legal ad and all that stuff. So, I mean, that relates to obviously what we were talking about earlier.
Yeah, and that's why I'm, part of the reason why I support the buy right on the duplexes. And then had a horror fit when I realized that I was supporting something like ninety eight Fearing.
Okay. All right, um, Chris, I guess I'm not seeing a ground swell of consensus to change the current policy that this board has. Um, and as I understand it, it's okay for our board to have one fee and the zoning board to have a different structure for their fees. So I guess we're okay for now.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, the time is eight twenty four. Is there any other old business?
I don't think so.
All right, do we have any new business?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, uh, Form A and R subdivision applications.
No.
None, okay, ZBA applications.
Oh, my goodness.
I wasn't in the loop. Chris, you're in the loop.
In the loop.
I was too busy to be in that loop.
I can tell you what they are. If I can find my sheet, let's see here. I think I've told you about some of them already. Two ninety and three hundred West Street. One of them is a duplex that already exists. And one is a duplex that's proposed. They're along West Street, just south of Crocker Farm School. Um, there's nothing particularly remarkable about either one of them. And those are coming before the planning board on March ninth.
Planning Board or ZBA?
Excuse me, ZBA. I'm getting everybody confused. CBA, I'm, I'm CBA now as well as being planning board. So I'm, things are starting to mix together in my mind. Anyway, I think we told you about that a while ago. Um, what happened was it was originally advertised for a certain date and the um, the notice wasn't posted on the town website in a timely manner. So we had to re-advertise it. Anyway, um, the next one is Canton Ave and that's really just a public hearing. Um, there's a development on Canton Ave at the very end, if anybody, buddy knows where Julius Fabos lived. Um, he's passed away since, but in any, any event, he had a big piece of property at the very end of the road. And he's, and his family sold that property and they created two flag lots. And one of the flag lots has a special permit to allow a house to be built there. And um, that house is coming to the ZBA to change the exact location of the house. But I don't think that's a big enough thing for the planning board to be particularly interested in. And anyway, it's not a public hearing, it's just a public meeting. But if you're interested, I could tell you more about it. That's coming back to the planning board on March twenty third.
ZBA.
Excuse me, ZBA.
These are all.
You're here to straighten me out. Um, five fifteen Sunderland Road. This is an interesting one. It's a proposal to put um, battery storage on a property. Um, it used to be Annie's Garden Center. Um, and it's been owned by the Chang family for a number of years. It's right up near the border with Sunderland. And they're gonna be putting um, a large amount of battery storage, standalone battery storage up there. And it's gone through the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission has scrutinized it and now it's coming to the ZBA. That may be something that you want to look at. It's coming on to the ZBA on March twenty third. You interested in having a um, presentation about that one?
At the moment, I'm not seeing any hands. Janet, you're on the Solar Bylaw Working Group. Do you? Look at this?
Oh, I, I think it's super important, but I wonder if the presentation should be to the Solar Bylaw Working Group because we've been looking at some of those issues around batteries, exciting issues around batteries, I'll say, as a euphemistic um, thing. So I, I bet.
There's no, there's no, um, should I say, there's no permitting path that would um, require that they go to the Solar Bylaw Working Group. It would be a courtesy on their part. Um, and, but there is a permitting path for having them come to the planning board because the planning board can be called upon to make recommendations to the ZBA on special permits. So.
Maybe I'll mention it to the other board. Um, Chris, can I ask you a quick question about the first duplex on West Street? Like what's the, there's an existing duplex and are they changing something or is it just they?
Yeah, the existing duplex, um, the people who own both properties, they're different LLCs, but they're, you know, basically the same people. Um, and they are taking a chunk of land away from the two ninety West Street to give to three hundred West Street in order to allow three hundred West Street to become a duplex. So that's really the change that's happening on two ninety West Street. It's nothing about the use.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
And then um, the spoke um, is, the spoke, as you probably know, it took over that building that used to have um, the copy shop and it also used to have a sub shop and pizza place. And anyway, now they have that whole building on East Pleasant Street. Um, and they are proposing a nightclub um, on Prey Street in a former build, in the building that was formerly Old Town Tavern.
Yep, and, and the laundromat.
And the laundromat, yeah, uh.
Yeah, yeah, when all, it's, I mean, at least that building at the opposite end is the laundromat. And it had the dry cleaners.
I think that uh, Old Town Tavern may be a standalone building.
No, it's one, I mean, it's one long structure and maybe it's a firewall, but it's one long structure.
Okay.
And it's all, you know, it's all vacant at this point.
So anyway, the spoke is um, going to establish something called Live at the Spoke in that location. And it's gonna be a nightclub and it's gonna be run by the same people who are running the, the Spoke on East Pleasant Street. There really aren't too many site changes. I think they're going to be putting two sheds um, behind the building to house some of their equipment. They're gonna be putting a fence up along the west side of the property. Other than that, they're really not changing much on the property, but it's an interesting use. So any interest in seeing that one?
Not seeing any hands. Andrew?
I mean, for my, my own curiosity, I would, I would like to know more about it, but I don't want to drag the board through it.
I guess, I guess we could all listen into the ZBA meeting.
That's, that's reasonable.
So that's gonna be heard by the ZBA on April thirteenth, if you're interested in tuning in.
Okay.
And those are um, let's see, what else do we have? I think I might have told you about some of these other ones already. So I won't bother with those. Okay.
All set?
Alrighty, that's good, yep.
Okay, then we'll move on. Uh, the time is eight thirty. Excuse me, eight thirty two. Any upcoming SPP, SPR, SUP applications?
Pam, just put something into uh, our system. What did you put in there, Pam?
Um, I put in, I didn't really put it in, um, but it's at Amherst College at the Book and Flower.
That's right, Amherst College is building a little outdoor gathering place and they are going to have an accompanying outdoor restroom of some sort, I believe. So um, that's coming to you. And trying to think, there'll, there have been a lot of people in here talking to us about different things, but nothing has yet gelled, so.
Okay, all right. All right, uh, Board and Committee Liaison Reports, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Bruce, have you actually started attending, I believe?
Well, have you, if you got your drum, drum kit there, uh, Doug, you could, and Andrew, are you near a cymbal or something? Yes, uh, I actually uh, have been confirmed. I have, thank you all. I have attended my first meeting. Um, first of all, it's kind of overwhelming. I mean, this is like, it's, it's, it's like a checkerboard, your Zoom call that looks like a Chuck Close painting. Um, at the uh, um, at the, the, uh, the, the news is that they reviewed their budget and uh, uh, and uh, I think that was largely, there was a couple, oh, there was a, uh, uh, a presentation related to, oh goodness me, I'm such a dimwit. I, sorry, just a minute, let me, let me do this properly. I clearly have to get better practice at this uh, so that I can be more like Janet when I'm talking to this topic. Uh, there was a strategic planning uh, scoping seminar um, there uh, booking uh, uh, this thing called the Consensus Building Institute. And uh, basically it's um, preliminary to a uh, 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 a plan, uh, assessment plan, a strategic plan for the, uh, for the organization. And, and that was, uh, the, the approach to that was presented. But uh, that I think is, is all. Any questions? Good, thank you.
All right, we'll move on. And, Andrew, seat back.
No updates.
Okay, Tom? DRB?
Just an update that Chris now has more on her plate and is now in charge of the DRB meetings as well. So I look forward to working with Chris. Um, and still she has someone to take this burden from her. But we have a meeting coming up um, in the next couple of weeks.
All right. Uh, Janet, Solar Bylaw.
Um, I don't really have much of an update and I was, um, we worked a little, about a, we were done a small section of the Solar Bylaw and it completely eludes me what it was. And I was hoping Chris would help remind me, but I, I think I don't want to ask her.
Okay.
I was working on it today, so I could tell you.
Oh, good, because it was like.
We worked on the last time had to do with monitoring and maintenance and decommissioning and abandonment and all of those things. So um, that's what we worked on last time. I think we're going to go over that again on Friday. And then we are also going to be talking about submittal requirements on Friday.
Okay, and then um, the other thing about the decommissioning, which I'm sort of interested in, is I, the que, it doesn't seem like there's been, people pretty much use the solar by law, the, the facilities. And it's not clear people really would be decom, decommissioning them because they're so valuable, like you would just swap in new panels and stuff like that. So um, that was just kind of, we spent a lot of time on that and I was kind of like, is this gonna happen? You know, kind of, it's just gonna stay a solar facility for decades and things like that. But obviously important, not gonna minimize it, but that's it.
Thanks Janet. See, uh, Chris, CRC?
So CRC has been working on the rental registration. They've also been working on a nuisance house by law. And this coming Thursday, tomorrow, they're going to be uh, can maybe coming to a conclusion about the rental registration. And then they're also going to be having an initial discussion about the zoning amendment that you've been talking about. So they will be holding a public hearing on March second, but they're getting their introduction to this tomorrow at four thirty. So if you want to tune in and hear what they have to say about it, you, you will be welcome to attend.
And that, that, that's followed by a zoning board meeting, I believe, so.
That's right.
You can fill up your whole afternoon and evening with town events. Okay, all right. Uh, I don't have any report uh, other than to say I'm looking forward to seeing all of you next Tuesday at seven o'clock in the town room. And um, we'll have, I think, two hours is the plan to just stand around a map and talk about where we, where we think people might accept more housing and what kind of housing that might be. Um, so, uh, Chris, anything from report of staff?
Just to say thank you so much to Nate and Pam for their hard work in the re, in recent weeks. It's been um, challenging, but we're managing to keep our heads above water. And so far, we haven't gotten into any bad trouble. Gotten into it.
How, how are you doing on, on hiring additional staff?
We have second interviews for two um, two individuals that we're hoping will pan out.
Okay, good. All right, um, unless anybody has anything else, time is eight thirty nine and I think we can adjourn. Thank you all for sticking it out tonight. Tom? Go, go to bed, Tom, I'm gonna.
Be strong.
Get better. Stop recording.